We're going to call the order.
We were having an important conversation.
Anyhow, call them in or Wi-Fi.
It's okay, it's fine, I can't get into it.
You can leave. Call the order. So, I would like to ask Mary if you would please meet us in person. What's that?
No, no, but that's okay.
We're doing this.
Okay. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Carol is back in there so often.
Charlie, Lou.
Yeah.
Carol.
From the public. Lou is the first.
All right, any comments from the public on closed session matters?
Is negotiations part of the session?
Yes.
And there are no yellow cards out there.
Okay, I'll let Dawn in.
We're not coming together today, you could tell.
Because everybody's up to celebrate. CSEA negotiations, yes.
Just CSEA.
Oh, it's not ours?
No, because...
Okay, is that later, I just...
No, because we're settled, because we're settled.
Well, next week we're doing, it's on next week's agenda.
Oh, it's on next week's, okay.
Oh, you're giving a public comment into the regular meeting for...
Sure.
Yep. So after all that, after all that, is there any public comment?
Well, I just wanted to...
This is on closed session, so we got adjourned and we shall return. So we're going to go ahead and reconvene and move it along now. Here, we opened at 5:30, we said the pledge, we adjourned, and now we're reconvening. So, adoption and approval of the agenda.
All right.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Aye.
E1, approval of the June 9th, 2015 agenda, that should say the minutes, I believe. Or approval, no, I'm sorry, approval of this agenda, we did that. Approval of the minutes, approval of the minutes of May 26, 2015, F1.
All right.
Any discussion and corrections?
Yep.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Special recognitions, reports, and presentations under item G, G1. It's going to be Ron Everett, our Director of Human Resources, and members of the Teacher Evaluation Committee will present the new teacher evaluation process, so take it away, Ron.
All right, good evening, great to see you, I brought some documents.
An all-star cast.
It is an all-star cast. Some of the members of the Teacher Evaluations Committee. Uh-oh, oh yeah, Steve, I guess, yeah. I told her six, that's all right. And you probably know them all, but I won't introduce them anyhow. Emily Donegan, Principal at Kennelworth. Beth Street, math teacher, Kennelworth. Linda Shaler, the principal at Casa Grande. Just met her the other day. Maureen Rutter, principal at Middell. And Kim Sharp, teacher at Casa Grande, and as you know, they have the president. And I'm Ron, the Director of Human Resources. And you've heard, we've actually presented to you once or twice about the process of redesigning teacher evaluation for Pudlema City Schools. And we're at some level of culmination, and so before I walk out the door, I wanted to share where we, you know, what we've come up with and what we have. As we had shared before, this teacher evaluation really is based on professional development. The idea that the best way to provide professional development for teachers is to look at where their growth areas are, where they're strong, and provide them the support that they need. It is also, and we've been talking quite a bit in the last couple of months about one-to-one devices and furniture, but it's really, this is the umbrella, this is, you know, this guides all teaching and learning around, through the rubric. I sent that to you, I don't know if you all got it, and I'm also not sure if you got draft three instead of four, so what I brought to you was draft four. I'm not exactly sure. So, we wanted to talk to you and kind of guide you through that tonight. The first thing I wanted to share is the, so I gave you a redacted copy of our former evaluation tool. And it looks like that. And it's not typical. What you will notice is that, for the most part, and it's probably true for 90% of our teachers, had no areas that they needed to improve. That was sort of the old system. And if you, the comments were fairly sparse, and I can tell you from my own experience, really strong teachers were given short shrift under this system. And it wasn't a peddylumethin when we researched, that was true pretty much nationally. The evaluation system throughout the nation found, and if you read today, maybe two or three of our percent of teachers throughout the nation have any areas that they really needed to improve, that they were all satisfactory strong in almost all areas. And so, we decided that we needed to redesign that. So the next one, I also shared a more current, redacted version of a current evaluation. And what you'll see is that it really provides very much more detail. Actually, the rubric that I sent you is aligned to this, and Maureen's going to talk about that in a couple of minutes. So it, well, number one, I think it's more objective. With the rubric, it really guides the conversation of teachers and principals about areas in which they have been strong and where they need to improve. But even more importantly, I think, is that as, and this is not going to happen overnight, but as people look at this, as teachers and administrators look at this rubric, it guides really what distinguished teaching looks like. And so, hopefully, will drive our conversation of what, what good teaching and learning looks like in, in all areas. As I said, Maureen's going to talk about it, it's a pretty complex document, but then we all agree that teaching is complex and needs something that goes along with it. So, Maureen, I'm going to hand this over to you to talk more specifically, and...
I got that one.
Oh, you got that?
Yeah.
All right. That's why I bring people who are more technologically adept than I am.
So as Ron said, the current rubric that's used by Peddylumethin Schools, this is the framework for teaching that we've all read and learned about. And the rubric is divided into four categories. So I know you have a rubric in front of you right now. So Domain 1 is planning and preparation, which has five components. Domain 2 has the classroom environment, and that has four components. Domain 3 is instruction, with five again. And Domain 4 is professional responsibilities, and that again has five components. When you look at the old evaluation tool, it did have all the, when you look down, it has all the standards for teaching, which we, as, you know, a district in the state of California, have to evaluate teachers on the current California standards for teaching. So what we did is we went and looked at all these different domains and figured out where the standards were placed. So one of the things that, you know, the teachers get, how does it know where the standards are and what domain they fall into. Teachers are really familiar with rubrics because of the time when they give assignments to students, they have, they give a rubric. So ahead of time, the child or the student knows, you know, what you need to do in order to get to a certain point on the rubric. Before, when we would evaluate teachers, there wasn't anything like that, that you could talk, look at. Teachers didn't have that time. And now, when teachers are being evaluated as part of the process in the very beginning, you sit down and you talk and you talk about the rubric. So as you are evaluating them, you're evaluating the teaching, and the teaching falls into these different categories. One thing that was really hard in the past was that if you had really strong teachers, all you could do is that they were marked in the same exact category as a satisfactory teacher. In the real old days, before we dared to do it on a computer, sometimes the principals would circle the word "strong," because that was what my university file. When you were doing it on a computer, you obviously couldn't do that. So the teachers that were distinguished or, you know, really strong in the area, you would do that often in the narrative, but it kind of gets lost in the, you know, when we were talking about a lot of things. So what's really nice with this new rubric is having the ability to really show where teachers are proficient, where they're distinguished. And often, you might, you know, even a really good teacher could be, at times, in the basic category, especially if they were changing grade levels, if they're changing schools or teaching, you know, changing from one curriculum to another, even at the same grade level, you have to go back and relearn it. So expertise comes from experience and also knowledge. And so every time that we switch that base on a teacher, you know, there's time for them to grow. The best part about the new rubric is how it ties into professional development, because you have the time to sit down and talk to teachers, you can talk about what ways or things they can do or offer opportunities for professional development that'll help them continue to grow.
All right, my glasses will get changed in a second. So the whole PD plan was based on the front page that you guys saw what our old evaluation looked like. At the beginning of the year, as a new teacher coming to Kennelworth a few years ago, seven, I got that piece of paper and I got a little number line that went from zero to 10, and I got to start with the category name, and I got to decide where I was on that. And then I went to the next one, and I decided where I was. And that's how you pick your votes for your professional development plan, which is due 45 days after school, starts roughly around October 22nd, 23rd, depending on the year. I would write my PD plan, and I would submit it at 3:59 PM on the day it was due. But I wrote it months ago, I just let it sit there because I didn't have to turn it. It was just a hoop to jump through, is what it really felt like to us. We never talked about it again. Many teachers would, not me, recycle their professional development plan every couple of years and just change the date on it. The only time that got caught is when they forgot to change the date on it, and they just turned the same date in, because they were just a hoop to jump through kind of thing. But now that we have this rubric, my professional development plan is based on that rubric. I was able to sit down, go through the continuum, highlight sentences in each part that kind of say where I am as a teacher or what I see, and my professional development plan is driven by the rubric. I have three goals this year, and it's now seems more like a continuum for me, so even though my professional development plan isn't going to be due till around October 22nd or 23rd next year, two of my goals from this year are staying on there. There are things that I want to continue to work on based on what I've been doing because we have been reflecting on our professional development plans throughout the year, and the administrators have been building in that time for us to do that at staff meetings or even taking it and saying, hey, this is what you're doing this afternoon, use that time to kind of take some time and see what you want to do. And we also work with a team on our professional development plans. I have other teachers in the math department that we have common goals, so we actually meet with each other. We read a book together last year on some questioning strategies that we're using in our classrooms, and we're able to come observe each other and see how that works. And today, we are all now in training for our next curriculum, and we're talking about another book today that we might actually do for next year, so we're kind of shifting in that direction. But just being able to have that reflection piece in there and use this again, and it being okay to use it again, and not just saying, okay, I'm recycling, I'm just turning it in again, I can't personally set a goal and be like, nailed it, one year, I'm done. It's something that I need to continue to develop to make myself a better teacher and do better for my students. So I'm excited about that piece of it.
Step in for a minute, just because being the historian here, the whole professional development plan actually came from a waiver that we got from the state back then, I believe it was, it was either the 80s or the 90s. And so, this district wrote up a proposal that teachers, instead of being evaluated every two years, they would be evaluated every four years. But the requirement was that every teacher in the district, every certificated member in the district would turn in a professional development plan. And I'm sure at the beginning, that was done very closely. Over time, we lost a little bit of the components of that, and that pointed out, you know, as an administrator, you would say, could you at least change the date this year? And it wasn't used really to the depth that really it needs to be so that teachers can drive their own professional growth. And in dialogue with the administrator who did the evaluation.
Is that waiver still in place, we don't have to go?
It is still in place, we don't have, we used to have to renew it, we used to have to send it in, I think, every couple of years. And I, actually, I'll tell you, at one point, I thought it was a myth, that I'd never really seen this waiver, I didn't know anything about it. So of course, I asked Kristi, and she said, well, yes, right here, boom, boom, boom. And about 2002, the state said, you don't have to send this in anymore, we believe you unless, you know, that, so the waiver is still...
So what's the, how many years have the teachers evaluated now?
Four years.
It's still every four?
Yes, yes.
Even with this new process?
At this point, yes. I mean, this is a live process in that we're waiting a little bit on the state to redo the stool bill and give us some guidance on the new expectations for the state. Sorry for stepping in, I just...
Oh, conversations, we're kind of out of order here, that's okay. So, it's good, yes. Ron, step in.
It's all good.
I was standing there, I'm working, I'm running around.
So, one of the great things about even way back in the dark ages when I started here, was that there was supposed to be a pre-observation conversation where the administrator and the employee sat down and talked about, okay, you know, what are your goals, what do you want me to see, are there concerns, whatever the conversation was going to be. But as Beth said, when the professional development plan wasn't really ingrained in what we were doing, it was just kind of, I remember my first year sitting there going, I don't know, everything, yeah. So anyway, so we are talking now about those conversations being incredibly integral to the evaluation process. All of this stuff is connected, there's nothing in isolation. I've always felt that that has been the most integral part anyway, that the conversation between evaluator and employee really sets the tone for what's going to happen and what they're going to see. And I also think that the reflection piece is also really important. We were able to, there was Emily went, and who else went? Kylie.
And Sharon.
Keenan Haynes, Sharon Howell, who else went?
I think that was it, I think it was four.
That was it, and Amy. We went to a training in Davis, May 19th through 21st, I believe it was, and it was on learning focus supervision, and I have to tell you, I'm going to be pushing really hard that this is our next step. Although this initial process is complete with the process itself, the language going into the contract, the agreements, and the trying of it, and all that kind of stuff, the conversations really are incredibly important, and I came back and I was gushing, Linda can tell you, I was gushing about this amazing process that we went through. Laura Lipton is one of the authors of this book, and she was actually one of the trainers there, and she was absolutely amazing, and it really kind of broke down why those conversations are so important, how you can draw important information out of people to lower anxiety about this, that evaluations shouldn't be a gotcha, it should be about development, it should be about how you can take a good teacher and make them great, how you can make a great teacher even better. And so that was kind of really an amazing piece to find, and there were four of us there, and it was awesome. And so, this is going to become a total component of what we're going to do next. And also, the committee had talked about administrators have a lot on their plates. And we have been playing with the idea of possibly down the road, having some sort of teacher leaders or instructional coaches to be part of that process, people who are in the classroom, doing that job, being able to kind of get in there and look at it through a different lens than an administrator. Something like this program would just be an amazing training for not only the instructional coaches, but also for any administrator coming into this new process. I think that's all I have to say.
So these are just some comments from teachers that are being evaluated through this process this year. I believe most of our teachers that were being evaluated the last two years chose to try the new route versus going the old route, because we were still given the option last year and this year, I believe. And most of the teachers at Kennelworth that were being evaluated chose to try the new system and see how that would go for them. So these are some comments from various teachers. For me personally, I was evaluated this year with the new system. I enjoyed the fact that it opened up more dialogue between Emily and myself. It wasn't just her coming into my room for one and a half hours to see an entire lesson from beginning to end. She came in over a course of an entire unit, and came in at the beginning of a class one day and saw what we were doing, came through the middle of another class to the end of another class, and even in passing the hallway, we had our follow-up conversation at the end of that unit, but there was a quick thing, and she said, hey, how'd that go with this kid, and what happened at the end of that, because she left before, got to see the end of that lesson, but she got to see the student's development throughout the unit and what I was trying to achieve based on the goals for them during that timeframe. So I like this better than just that hour and a half here and an hour and a half there, and then we're all done.
And I have to also jump in and say, I was also evaluated this year, and I think it was the most thorough and really comprehensive evaluations I've had in 20, this is my 22nd year, and this is the first time I really feel like it was right on, it was fair, it was good commentary. The way that the form is set up is that you have the domain, and then you have the comments right underneath that, so you don't have to flip through three pages to get to the narrative, it's right there, so you can really see what they're talking about, where they X-boxes. And in the technology area, I got a couple of basics, and I think Linda was a little worried, and I thought it was fair, because that's true, and she knew. And she looked at me like, I'm sure it was fair, because I'm new to it. You know, I jumped in with both feet in one area, I have about 15 more to go, and I'm sure by the time school year starts, I'll have 30 to go. But I expected that, because that's really, that's where I felt I was too. So it was, it was a good way to kind of have that conversation where maybe that the anxiety of teachers who've been in it a long time, who really feel that they are good teachers as I do, can accept that idea of, well, I'm just trying it, and things are changing so quickly, and now what can I do to get to the next level, what can I do? We have a common language now, so I really, I felt that this was an amazing process.
Well, it sounds like it's more of just what can I do to, it sounds like it's about, this is what I need, this is what, I'm having trouble with this.
It's all about professional development, and it's just at moment in time, what do you see, what do you need, how can we move you over on the continuum? That absolutely was our goal.
What happens if the teacher gets, you know, marks in the unsatisfactory or not observed? Do you wait another four years to evaluate them?
No, not necessarily. Ron, I'm wrong.
We had that as part of the system in the past, that was satisfactory, provisional or unsatisfactory. Provisional or unsatisfactory would require the person to be evaluated again the next year. Here, it meets district standards, if it does not meet district standards, if they do not meet district standards, then they are evaluated again the next year. So that, that's, that cycle is moving forward. So that...
So at the end of this evaluation, oh, I see, meets district standards, so you get that, everything.
Yes, yeah.
Even if you have...
And all of that would be supported by, you know, the where the boxes were checked and the domains and the evidence given for each section.
PG, you can have some basics and meet district standards, but if you have a lot of unsatisfactory or not meeting, we had lots of discussion where that, as we built it with, you know, those big teachers in the room, and if you read the language on the unsatisfactory, none of you would want your child in that class. So if you read that language, and everybody agreed to that language on the rubric, so that, people that fall into that category will be coached through the HR system.
It's also the idea that there should be conversations along the way, it shouldn't be a, I saw you in October, and now in March, I'm telling you there's an issue. There's conversation, that piece, that coaching piece, whoever it may be at that point, there would be conversations during, during the course of what was happening, so it wouldn't be a gotcha at the end. That's what we're totally trying to avoid.
That just, that was perfect. So one of our next steps is actually to start talking to administrators and training them on the conversations, and using the book that Kim's referencing to help lead that training. We're also working on continuing to practice using the rubric together. Administrators see different things when they go in the room, what I see and what Linda sees could be very different, depending on what our focuses are, so we've been watching videos as an administrative group and taking notes and having conversations about them to try to get us all kind of trained on the rubric. And plus, we don't write a PD plan from the rubric, so getting to know the rubric as administrators and really memorizing it, like we just have the other one memorize. And then, also redesigning the administrative evaluation process, so that ours also reflects some more of these deeper conversations for our own personal growth.
And getting back to what BB asked earlier, that is the intent of the professional development plan, that is, and that's every year, that's not every four years. Teachers are expected to really look at that rubric and, and really design where they need to grow, taking in the conversations they had with the administrators, so that even if they are, they're doing pretty well, they can improve. And part of that professional development plan is a team of teachers, so that they're having conversations with their colleagues about things that they're trying, things they're proving. It fit in well with the Peddylumethin Learning Network, having teachers observing one another. So the hope is that that will, that will align with the professional development plan, so that they are having colleagues coming in and having conversations, continuing conversations about ways to improve.
So, go ahead. So by definition, is basic meeting district standards?
No, if they were not, there were, proficient is really where we're saying that somebody is, is strong. Basic would not, I mean, if there were lots of basics, you would not be meeting district standards.
So out of the five categories here, what's there? There's five categories, right? Excuse me, there's five on the first one?
Oh, you mean, any areas, yeah, there's...
Is there some kind of math to this, or how does that, how does that work?
There is, there is not a math to this, we, we did discuss having, because some of the things, like if you are unsatisfactory knowing that your content area, but you're fine contacting parents, well, that's probably, the not knowing your content area is probably a huge, a much larger piece than some of the others.
I guess what I'm looking at, Ron, is the trigger between a one-year piece and a four-year period, and so if it's basic all the way through, who, who looks at, is it just the site principal that looks at this and says, yeah, we make, we make district standards? Or does that come up to the just human resource, how does that work?
Spinning.
Am I, am I ahead of the game?
Well, I am, one of the last things is the concern that we really moved this, you know, we've got a great tool now, and we really need to make sure our administrators are trained, and so that we've got some calibration that people are, if you're at McNear or you're at Kennelworth, your evaluation should be, tell you the same sorts of things. And if, and if people are basic throughout, it is the principal who has to finally make that decision about evaluating again the following year. We also have in our contract that although somebody has a four-year, it's a four-year cycle, if the administrator sees that, that there's some, you know, that there's some weakness, there's some concern, then that can be moved up to the following year after a conversation with the, with the teacher to set, to tell them that there are some concerns and they need to be evaluated again the next year. It can be fluid, I don't know that that's done with regular, regularity. I think this will be more of a guiding force.
What's the thought between four years instead of two years, I mean, is it logistics every two years? Because in private enterprises, it's every year, quite frankly. So I could almost see doing it every two years, but if you had a teacher that rated out exceptional, that they get a pass per year, I mean, I'd get some of that. But it seems to me that there should be an ongoing performance review, just because... But it seems to me that, that there should be an ongoing performance review, just because, you know, quite frankly, it's critical. And where I see potential problems is, let, let's say we have two math teachers, teaching general, and one's lagging and parents figure it out, they've got to go to this person's class, not that person's class. And I have sometimes this personality, this is the fun teacher, this is the dry, boring, hard teacher. So I get that, we don't need that. But it's always kind of struck me as odd that we talk about stakeholders and end users and all that, but whenever we look at these evaluations, I'm big on efficacy, the teacher can come in from all different levels, but at the end of the day, what I think we'd want to see is both math classes, my hypothetical, those kids in general math, eighth, ninth, 10th grade, come out with the same level, ready to move on to the next grade level, right? Same with English. So you don't want these, and so if you wait too long and you have a teacher that's kind of lagging behind, you get kids that are getting an advantage almost by being in this class and not that class. And I have kind of trouble with that. But the efficacy part of it is, whenever I see these things, nobody ever talks about student evaluations or parent evaluations or peer evaluations. I see administrators writing, but maybe some of those upper level, maybe the kids in juniors, seniors, and it could be anonymous, I'm not looking to rip teachers or anything, you know, some of that stuff, but it maybe, no, no, maybe.
That's, that's as ready to trust it.
Okay, let me finish, but I think parents, you know, especially with Harry's weighing in, you know, there's a lot more parent, teacher involvement. And it just doesn't have to be a defining criteria, but something the administrator could take into consideration, okay? Because a lot of this stuff administrators might not know, there's a lot of parents that, that don't complain readily, but they're aware of things that are going on. I hear it. And so I, I just always think in these evaluation processes, we need to be focused on efficacy. And personally, one of the other things I just passed on, that I've always thought would be an effective implementation would be, so Sherry has her English class and Mary has her English class, Mary's got the rock star English class. I mean, they are, they're all AP, you know, AP bound and art bound. She has a class of pretty average, why not test coming in, right? And test going out. So each teacher relatively could know, you might say, well, this, she did a bang up job. Her kids improved like 32%. The other kids, 15%, but they started out ahead. So there's some sort of measurement there about how, your efficacy. I get the professional development piece and keeping good teachers and, like she said, making them better, I totally get that. But if we're going to do evaluations, it really needs to, I think, have some meat in it that, hey, you, you need to, it's like a coach. You know, sometimes you have great athletes and, and they underperform because of the coach and other times you get, people think they're not going to win a game and they go 500 and it's a lot to do with the coach. So there's some teachers, I'm sure, bring out the best and you wouldn't have given them a chance in the beginning. And others, you just inherit this great class. We know how that works. I know there's all these variables, but I know Beth's chomping at the bit.
I don't even want to answer because I'm happy.
I'm just curious if those get, if those get factored in, because I, I understand administrative teacher, that one-on-one, but what about these other prospects? Beth?
So the student survey is something that is still being addressed and it is an optional part of the evaluation process right now. The teacher can choose to give a student survey or not, except for really K2, we're talking more of a parent survey than a student survey because as parents, you know that you can ask your kid, hey, here's a question on this thing. So, do you like your teacher? Well, I got benched at recess today. No. You know, that's a little sad face you're going to get that morning from whatever happened at school.
I was saying more junior high.
Well, actually, I do, and I'm going to be able to address both of these things. I actually teach geometry, so I get the students, they come in very high. I also teach outdoor readiness at Kennelworth, which is the lowest eighth graders that we have. So I got both ends of the spectrum. I gave them all the same student survey. I sent out an email, here are the questions, give me feedback, I want to know what I can do better to, so that our class gets more out of what's going on here. And I got a lot of very good feedback. I got the occasional, you're awful kind of things, but I did get a lot of, there was the big common thing and I was able to address it, is the kids saying you're going too fast and then you got the whole group of kids that say you're going too slow. And it's kind of having that, being able to address that, okay, now we've got a signal, so I'm going to start asking before I move on, here's what I'm getting from everybody. And it's the hardest part of my job is trying to address this for you guys, this making it go at a pace that works for everybody, not going too fast that I leave people behind and not going too slow that you're bored. So we got to figure that out. So this is something that I gave in January and was able to address it throughout the year. I'm able to give the survey again at the end of the year and a lot of the comments had more to do with the pacing got a lot better because it was something that we kept addressing and talking about. That was the big issue in there. And then there were other couple of little things, but they were things easy to address kind of thing. And the, by way of the testing, I do give a test at the beginning of the year. They are different tests because it's different levels of class, but I'm able to see that growth that the students are showing in both classes, based on what we started with and what we were doing. And I give it beginning, middle and end of the year so I can see that continuum. If I get to a point where I got a flat line, then I got a problem. But if I see that growth and that growth in my lower kids is not going to be as extreme as that growth in my higher kids, but if it's going in a positive direction based on the material that we taught in class and what they've gotten out of it, then I know that I'm doing my job. And that's part of my discussion with Emily because I, she sees all the test results. I don't have to show her the survey stuff if I don't want to. She saw it, but she, I don't have to show it to her.
Yeah, I did the same thing. I, I gave a, at the end of the first semester, I gave a, what's going on, what can I do better, you know, what other things have we wanted to do? And I had ninth graders this past year and they were amazingly honest and, and forthcoming and wonderful and we ended up in the second semester reworking when we did things during the period. And that was totally from them because I got so many comments about this, you know, I really wish we did this later in the period because, no, they're ninth graders, eight, 20, they're still sleeping. So, so anyway, so that definitely was really good feedback for me. Did I show Linda all the surveys? No, but I did talk to her about how we restructured that and it was totally from them. And they all, they became a little bit more invested in the class at that point because I sat down with them basically the first day that we got back to the second semester and said, okay, here are the results from the survey, let's talk. And so we were, they were able to kind of feel like, hey, you know, she's responding to us and I really felt that I had more to buy in at that point. So yes, teachers are doing that and more teachers are surveying their kids than probably we know about, just because we do seek that information from our students all the time. It just isn't in a formal way. And when we talked about it with the committee, it was definitely at this point, yes, it should be done, but it should be something that's discussed in either the pre or the post-observation meeting and the teacher can just let the administration know, administrator, evaluator, whoever it is, this is what I found, these are the questions I used and this is what I did about it, instead of handing it over. Because, you know, just, just to kind of get people in that mode of, of realizing that's important and also the reflection piece of it.
So, so we did develop a survey, three, six and then seven, 12, so we had two different ones. And we, we didn't come to an agreement on whether it would be required of everybody at this point. And so it is being, this will hopefully be a growing learning and live document that we will evaluate throughout, or they will evaluate throughout the year.
There's still a little we to do.
As far as the, as far as the, the testing, you know, Jane and I had a number of conversations about, you know, we really don't have something standardized and teachers, you know, develop their own assessments, but it would be hard to, you know, unless everybody's doing a similar assessment. We don't really know what the Sback is going to share with us, but it also, you know, it won't, it won't measure all, all subjects, all, all areas.
Well, maybe just quotes on that. Mary would go first.
Actually, I think Physical Fitness probably has the best one at this point, Mary.
I, I just wanted to make a comment about the, the surveys I taught at Stoner State and they required the surveys at the end and it was useful information for the, for the next semester, but it didn't help with the current. So I like, of course, it's only a semester at a time, you don't have kids for a year, but I like the idea of doing the mid-year evaluation so that then you can adjust your teaching to fit the needs of those particular kids. So that those, you know, real regimented, you know, fill-in-the-bubble kind of surveys that you do in college, it was helpful for me as a, as a teacher, but not for that class. So I, I think this kind of system would be much more valuable.
And real quick, and what about the peer review piece? I mean, I get administrative review, but what about peer review of other teachers in your department or just other teachers on campus? And I think that goes more to your, your teamwork approach, your compatibility, your helpfulness, because I know the teachers were, or at least tried to work some Patiko and I'm sure there's some that do a much better job of that than others.
There, there has been great interest in the committee. Chetan Chikini actually brought that forward a number of times. She wanted to present tonight, but she's out of the country, so.
Bless her.
There are some challenges with that. We've talked quite a bit about teacher leaders, as Kim pointed out, sort of like the Pedaluma pioneers, who we hired, you know, released from some aspect of their teaching to work with the administrator, to work with the teacher, to help them improve. Teachers aren't allowed to evaluate teachers, I mean, that's really the administrator's job, but there certainly could be more conversation. One of the challenges.
Who doesn't allow them? Is that the state law?
Yeah, yeah. I mean, you have to have an administrative credential to evaluate certificated employees. But, you know, having some of those conversations, particularly providing some insights on best practices, letting teachers know, you know, what is they're doing, maybe sharing a lesson, observing a lesson, that, that there can be some peer feedback. That is, that is the goal of this document that we get there, but you really can't just ask teachers, you know, it, it costs some money, it takes some time, there's some release time involved with that. At the elementary level, probably a teacher that's, you know, that's their primary duty is going from school to school, but that hasn't been worked out mainly because we didn't really have any money to work that out. And so, so that's certainly an aspect that this committee was very interested in, just couldn't, couldn't move it in right now really because of dollars.
Which is a great segue to my slide.
Take it.
I didn't really feed Mike those questions, but his questions were a perfect segue to what I'm about to say. So we've been at this, I believe, no, this is your four.
Four, our five.
This could be your five. So we started out five years ago, the people on the teacher evaluation committee, going up to SCO, at that time Pivot Partners was leading a number of districts through, working through, what would it look like to redesign your evaluation? And, and, you know, as we are ahead of the curve in so many things in public city schools, we jumped right in, spent two years creating this new document, the document you have in front of you, this new rubric, the tool itself, and we've been piloting it now for two years. And as Beth said, the vast majority of teachers in our district have selected this as their evaluation document and invariably come back and say, this is, as Kim said, this is just so much better than the old document. So we got that in place, but we're still using pretty much the same process that we've already used or that we have always used with the old tool. So we have a great new tool, a great new rubric, but pretty much the same process. So we started talking in the committee, teachers, administrators, about what would it look like if we want to just totally think outside the box? What would that look like to really redesign the process as well to make it even more effective for teachers? I will tell you from my perspective as an administrator, it's been much more time-consuming to use this particular document than it has been to use the old document because it requires me to have more conversations with the teacher, to look more closely at the rubric itself and to be more thoughtful in my comments. I'm not just, this isn't multiple choice anymore. I'm not just checking off boxes. I really have to look at what's being said, where did I see that in the classroom? What didn't I see? What suggestions might I have? Now, that's not a bad thing necessarily, but I will tell you that as an administrator, I evaluate about 11 teachers per year. That's how many we have in our district or in our school, I should say, you know, cycling through. And I have four administrators, but we each do somewhere between eight and 11 a year. So that's a lot of time spent observing, doing write-ups, et cetera. You want it to be meaningful because you don't want to waste your own time nor the time of the teacher. So again, we're starting to think, so what could it look like if the process changed a little bit? And Mike, you addressed a few of those things with the question of what about peer review? What about instructional coaches? What about these kinds of things? So as we started having that conversation, along came SCO again in collaboration with UC Davis and this teacher evaluation design team. And I actually pulled something off one of my emails to kind of explain what that is. And the teacher evaluation initiative is our opportunity, so this is UC Davis, SCO and the Reed Center at Davis, to once again take what we've learned and ask a question. Is it possible to institutionalize a quality improvement process that represents teacher voice, addresses the needs of teachers and administrators and leads to improved instructional practices in ways that can be captured through the district's formative and summative evaluation processes? So it's not just about saying you're great or you suck. It's about saying, you're really great at these things, you're pretty darn good at these things, this is brand new to you because we just added technology or because we just brought in integrated math or because we've done all these other things, new furniture, et cetera. So how do you need support? So now we have partnered with UC Davis's Reed Center and SCO to continue working on this. So this three-day meeting that Kim and Emily and some others went to at Davis was part of that conversation. That's where this learning focus supervision came from. Then in July, a number of us are going out to, it's really going to be hard, the data base, the end of the data for three days to continue this conversation. So a, a lot of it is, what can we do to bring teachers into other teachers' classrooms to give them feedback? You know, there's this old adage, good teaching is good teaching and we all know it when we see it. That's absolutely true. I know good teaching when I see it. But if I go into Beth's classroom and I might be able to see that she's struggling with teaching a particular concept, am I going to be, as an English teacher, the best person to coach her on how to do a better job of teaching that concept? Maybe not. But maybe if another math teacher came in and observed that same lesson, they might have some very specific feedback that could drill right down into what the issue is and help her immediately. So that requires trust and I think through this process, we have built a lot of that within, between PFT and administration in terms of coming into classrooms and having honest conversations. And we have certainly more teachers visiting other teachers' classrooms than we ever have, but this is part of what we hope to achieve with this collaboration is to figure out, okay, we've got a really good tool, we all acknowledge it, it's awesome, how do we use it to its best advantage for kids, for teachers, for administrators, for the district?
So, so we've addressed many of these things, but, but really, I mean, an important part, Kim's going to speak to it in public comment, but it has been ratified into the contract. So we have agreed that this is the, you know, this new tool is something that we want to incorporate and use. The concern, as Linda spoke to and sort of looking at, you know, hearing from Davis and, and that, it's, it's fine to have a really good tool, but if you don't really use it appropriately and you keep doing what you've always done, it's really not going to make any difference. And so working with Davis, SCO, about four or five other districts, now, none of them, we're the only ones who actually have recreated our evaluation system, the others are at the very bottom, but we will be in conversation with them. And, and as far as the peer part, as, as I mentioned earlier, with the PLNs, we do have peers going into each other's classes. It's not necessarily an evaluative tool, it's, it's, it's coaching, it's sharing with one another. But Linda, you know, they, I think mostly are subject area alike, so it is a math teacher going into a math teacher's class, an English teacher, et cetera. So, so we need to continue moving forward so that, you know, we don't just say, okay, we're done with that and move on, but that it continues to progress. It's one of the reasons I wanted to make sure you were aware of the documents we have there, so that, that language, I mean, if you look at what distinguished looks like, it's, it's pretty daunting. And in fact, one of the quotes is, is that, you know, distinguish is an area that you visit, but you probably don't live there in all areas. Proficient is, is pretty strong too, it's pretty complex, but it needs to continue and the administrative team and everybody needs to continue to improve and make sure that, that this, that the language, that, that what we're looking at as best practices becomes a conversation in this district.
There are also those of us on the committee that are committed to continuing on. It won't be the humongous committee that it used to be where every site would and every, every site had a teacher and an administrator, because this definitely is something that is a, a, a process and we're just at the beginnings of that process and it's sort of like a. And it's sort of like the first year of teaching, you don't know if you're gonna get out of it until you jump in. And so that's kind of what we're doing now, is we're jumping in with both feet and we're realizing that the systemic part of it needs to also support this awesome tool that we have. The tool is amazing. It's daunting, but it's amazing. And so I know the counselors right now are going through the same process of rehamping theirs and they use ours. It's kind of a jumping off part, you know, we'll be kind of hitting all of those special services areas as well, but the overarching idea is making sure that it's about development.
So, I wasn't told how much time it would be, and you guys never mind asking questions.
I was gonna not show that slide.
If there are any questions, I guess you guys don't need to be told, are invited to ask questions.
We kind of did, and we're fully successful as it went off. Does anybody have any questions?
I was curious, did you have resources for this?
Yes.
Okay, good. This is, this is-
Yes.
Not only did Charlotte Danielson book, but we looked at North Carolina, Houston-
So we've actually developed a teacher evaluation website where we have all of the resources we looked at prior to making decisions on it, so other people, other state, other teachers could see where we had come from. Any articles we've read are on there as well, so that teachers could look and see where we were going.
In this spare time.
Right, and that's, that's just also what this particular committee did. There was also a group like Lydia had talked about that had gone to SCO and worked with Pivot for two years, and that also we had a plethora of documentation, I mean, tons and tons of, of different articles and examples from all over the nation. So we really had amazing research at our fingertips and were able to settle on it pretty easily once we tried to build our, and realized that was just not going to happen. So it was, but we did, we made sure that the CFPs were in it and it was on a core base, and that it was that continuum, and it was kind of everything that we were looking for, so, yeah.
So, do we have some four-year, excuse me, the four-year window? Is probably not true?
Yes.
That's a negotiated term?
Yes, it is. At this point, as I said, we're still waiting to see what the state decides, and that has been an ongoing conversation. We don't know what the states knew, you know, but nationally and, and locally, people are looking at teacher evaluation and wouldn't be surprising that they would come up, that they have changed in some. I think it was what Mike referred to, most districts, it's a two-year, but after, I'm not quite sure how many, but after a certain amount of years of-
Positive review.
Positive review, then you can go five years.
So you're saying that the four-year window currently is a negotiated term, and if I understand correctly, that down the road it could be a dress decision?
Yes, yes. I wouldn't be surprised at all that they would-
For how long has this been a four-year?
I'd be really surprised.
Well, it's only been this way since I-
The nineties, at least.
Yeah. Yeah. Since I've been-
And you thought it was twenty-two years.
When a, when a teacher's first hired, it's not go from one to four?
Yes, it's every year, it's so you're permanent.
So you're, once you're permanent, you're, you're hired and everything is great, you get evaluated twice during the first year, twice during your second year, and then also your third year, and then again your seventh. Right, so it goes there.
Yeah.
Any other questions?
Sounds like it was a really well thought out, labor intensive, back then.
Yeah, and I appreciate your candid, I appreciate the presentation. So I really do appreciate all that work. I mean, any time it's a five-year run, it's, it's, it's obviously a very glorious process, but I hope it's a pyramid that we've taken from a large base and we're obviously moving to some sort of meaningful, you know, application.
It was also a great shared decision-making model of a committee because Ron and I learned it, and I think that that helped build the trust in the room and be able to have the, the conversations that we needed to have in order to have the product.
Okay, so thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it, and I'll go enjoy yourself. So we're gonna move on to the next item, which is G2, and it's a report from our interim chief business official, Ray Cool, on the 2015-2016 tentative budget. Really fast, it's easy, I mean, you're all.
Okay, so, okay.
Hold off for a second, those two went to your water. Steve's over there spilling good news.
Please fill your computer if you're gonna drink that.
Yeah, if you hear that frisk, she doesn't have water in her, like, Steve. Laura, you don't worry about kindergarten.
So I'm reporting on a tentative budget tonight, which is the last step before adopted, which is our next regular scheduled four-minute meeting. And progress was going real well until Steve decided he was gonna settle with PFD. So this is the biggest change since-
You can give the letter, Steve. Technical speed.
It's kind of hard to see the white lettering.
That's right.
Was preliminary, we hadn't settled yet, and so these are the terms of the contract settlement. For this year, we have two and a half percent on schedule, two point two five percent off schedule, and we've added a 20th step to the PFD salary schedules. Next year, there is a two percent on schedule, two percent off schedule, and we've also added two staff middle and days. So here are the costs of the settlement. The two point five percent is costing us approximately $766,000 in the current year, and the off schedule is at $681,000. I can't see that.
Yeah, so six eighty-nine, so this is-
And the 20th step is approximately $49,000. So the total cost of the district is 1.5 million. And I've also noted that the on schedule is coming from general funds, the off schedule is coming from the one-time revenues. And you'll see in next year, the two days of professional development is gonna come from the supplement. Now, the things to keep in mind is not, the bottom line, yes, is important, it's the cost of the settlement, but this all last year, this, this current year, we've already included two and a half percent into the budget. It's always been there, so it's current year and out two years, we've budgeted the two and a half percent. So the additional is just the off schedule and the, what, the additional two percent in next year.
And by the four point five, that's this year's 2.5.
Exactly, so you know, 2.5 plus two, right. So the other changes, well, it's not really changed, but there's the $4.1 million in the one-
What are you talking about?
Sure.
Fifteen sixteen top line, 1.426 million, sixteen seventeen, 1.473.
Because there's no increase, it's just mainly the increase is step and column and the increase to the stores piece that's a piece of that increase, 50,000.
The only difference is 50,000.
When you're talking 4.5 percent, you know, our step and column costs are running approximately for PFD $400,000. So when you're talking only four and a half percent of that step and column, exactly.
So that's only the change, but that doesn't include the step and column?
Right, it doesn't include the seven column itself, because we wouldn't include that anyway. It's just the cost of the seven.
Thank you.
Okay? So I wanted to show you that the, if our enrollment stays what we projected, we'll be getting 4.1 million. And another change in the budget that will be in the adopted is the Peddle of Pioneer program, which is a $5,000 one-time stipend plus a release coverage for secondary, and the cost of that I projected is 235,500. And these are gonna be budgeted by the one-time fund.
Ooh.
Oh. I don't think that's gonna help.
You can adjust them. You can adjust them.
Can you magnify them?
Where did we go?
That's better.
Yeah.
I can't see anything.
You can read out the screen.
Yeah. Okay, so basically what I did was I put those additional costs minus the two and a half percent that I already had in the budget, and I remember this is all not in the actual adopted yet, that hasn't been finalized yet, and added the additional costs so we didn't have any budget. Okay. So basically, we're looking at now having any balances of, I think... The, the increment in the current year was approximately $700,000 into the additional expenses.
Yeah, that makes sense.
But with the, with the increase in the mandate, it costs one-time revenue, we're now showing that we're projecting next year to be still positive, not deficit spending. But with the third year out, we are showing a $1 million deficit spending.
And that's without any increase incorporated? Does it have a COLA from the state?
It does have a COLA built in.
And, yeah, and the gap funding as proposed.
As proposed, yes, okay.
The, the one thing to note is the 290 plus thousand dollar increase in fifteen sixteen, that's before an agreement with CSCA management or complimentary.
All right. So that's likely to change.
But the, the other aspect of that is the one-time funds, unless shared and maybe buys by Reddick, were in and out. It can come out of the one-time funds. You know, I strongly recommend using the one-time funds to make sure you have no deficit spending in fifteen sixteen.
Yeah, the one-time funds are all built in as expenses currently, so that's why the one-time increase is also being taken out of those, those expenses that we budgeted but have no specific earmark for.
Right.
Like the pioneers would be earmarked for the pioneers, but we have no place setting for those funds yet.
Got it.
The key things to note is we're still projecting positive reserves.
Unappropriated reserves?
Yes.
Going 2.6 percent?
Yes, onward about the three, the required three.
Right, but that's, that's not-
That's spinning it up already, isn't it?
Yeah.
Especially if you look at sixteen twenty-seven.
The out years, yeah.
1.6 percent.
The out years, we are getting forty.
Forty-six.
We all hope the state economy continues to grow.
And that Uncle Jerry continues to-
Yeah.
Floats somewhere away.
Yeah, yeah, those percent reserves. Is the one-time funding, is that something that does annually, now from everybody?
The reason it came this year was because they had unexpected revenues, and so it's just gonna be a random. If the economy continues to grow, it could happen again next year, or it could not.
But the profit ninety-eight dollars are up to sixty-eight million dollars for A-12 education, and that number will continue into the future and be added on by, well, not really growth in ADA occurring in the state, but they'll have COLA added to it, or actually the increase in cost of, of, excuse me, increase per capita revenues will be added to it.
Unless there's another downturn, in which case we'll start playing our games again. But, but we could say this still continues, it's, at least we have the ongoing money.
And they're on track for restoring the COLAs, like I said, in 2014, they were gonna, the business government thing, they were gonna make the teachers' hole on COLAs back to 2006 and seven-
Seventy.
By, or 2007, eight by 2021, right?
Right.
They're, they're ahead of that pace, but, I mean, this year, you know, the gap funding is only 3 percent, where it should be-
Should have, true to that, it should have.
Well, because you had to use the extra money to clean up this, the cash problem.
So, the next steps to adopted is, I, we will do, my department will do a final review of the current year expenses in order to get a better, better beginning fund balance for next year for adopted. And then we also review the site and department budgets for the new year and adjust the revenues, and then the, but it will be, the adopted budget will be presented in two weeks.
Okay, any questions?
Just to share with the board that we have a meeting next week that was initially just scheduled to, for the interview of the San Antonio principal position. We, because of the settlement, SCO made the recommendation to us, and we agreed to move what was going to be tonight, the LCAP and the budget public hearing to next week so we can incorporate the settlement into it. And so, your meeting's scheduled to start at six o'clock next week, we'll start at six o'clock, and we'll go to six thirty with the public hearing on the LCAP and the tentative budget, and then at six thirty, you'll go do two interviews for the San Antonio values principals.
And the AB 12 hundreds?
AB 12 hundreds, and your application of the tentative agreement with teachers will be a part of it next week as well.
And the half hour's number?
Half hour, should be sufficient. I mean, if you recall our typical public hearing on the budget, they're not knocking down the doors to, you know, on the other end.
So, Steve, are you comfortable with properly building community, email, text, Facebook, whatever, if you need to do, everybody who has a desire to give us influence is gonna be able to do that?
Yeah, and, and it's been published as required too, and we republished it to change the date as part of that. We've been letting it known during the course of the year that it's happening. I don't think there's probably anybody here tonight to speak on the LCAP and tonight with the initial, but then we've republished or modified the date in sixteen.
I know that there was a lot of public comment throughout this year about people not understanding or knowing when to make those comments, so I just hope to encourage everyone who is here that you will also communicate to those people who may have a desire to make those comments that that can be discussed. So speaking of which, let's turn on page, comments from the public. So, two tonight, so call up first Kim Sharp.
Thank you. Good evening, I'm Kim Sharp. I'm a parent in the district, a teacher at Cosgrove High School, and I also am the president of Peddle of the Federation of Teachers, and I get the pleasure to address you tonight with a very happy heart and renewed optimism for the future. As you know, the Federation negotiators and the district team met with the mediator on May 29th. After a long day, a very long day, we were able though to reach a fair, equitable tentative agreement to take for our members. And there's an awesome picture that one of our, our members took, well, one of the team members, and we're all, anyway. So during the last hectic week of school, the members of Peddle of the Federation of Teachers attended a general membership meeting, learned about the agreement- attended a general membership meeting, learned about the agreement, and cast their votes amidst finals, field days, packing classrooms, promotions, graduations, and report cards. It is with great pleasure that I get to report to you that three-hundred-and-sixty-one of our members voted. Out of that, three-hundred-and-fifty-two were yes to ratify, nine were no. That's a whopping ninety-seven-point-five percent saying yes to this amazing agreement that we were able to construct for them. Now that our biggest obstacle is close to done, and I urge the board to please accept our ratified agreement, not only for the employees that will benefit from it, but for the students who deserve well compensated and they're very happy teachers, here are my hopes for the future, immediate and long-term. I hope we learn from the past, but strive for the future. I hope we work together for the best quality education for our students, meaning clear and timely communication, a renewed commitment to our trust agreements, a clear commitment to true shared decision-making, a collaboration for the best district our students and community can serve. I hope that we can together build trust, and I hope that we also can agree to disagree but never lose sight of our goals. It is a new day, it is a happy day. I know that the Federation is committed to the goals I just stated, and I hope that you join me in achieving them, thank you.
Okay, our next speaker, Lisa Badley, is speaking on coaches' wages and voluntary assistant coaching teams and uniform job description.
Hi, I'm Lisa Badley, I'm no longer a parent, but I'm still Pedluma High School like Mr. President for just a few more twenty days, I think. Anyway, the reason I'm here is, it came to our attention in our last meeting that the cost of volunteer coaches has risen to two-hundred dollars, and the coaches pay for it. So we have volunteer coaches who aren't being paid, who pay for their own gas, volunteer their time, and they're paying the two-hundred dollars for the fingerprinting and whatever else that goes with it. I know when I first was here, twelve years ago, it was like twenty-five dollars for fingerprinting, because I think I did it for some reason, I don't know why, but anyway. So I think that's just astronomical not to be asking volunteer coaches. Now, for example, I know softball paid for it, but we fundraised, so the team paid for it, but I really think that should be something that the high schools or the district pays for, so I'd appreciate it if you'd consider that. And the second thing is, is I asked last time I was here about the coaches being removed from the bargaining committee or bargaining groups, their wages, so that, just, I just didn't think that it was fair that they went for so long since nineteen eighty-five without any type of increase in their wage. And now, in light of not your decision but California's decision that retired teachers cannot be coaches, that I was thinking if we actually took them out of those bargaining groups, that possibly make them a vendor or something, as long as their income doesn't meet whatever criteria, it might make it easier for us to be able to keep some of these great retired teacher-coaches on at the school. So that was just another thought I wanted to pass that on. What was the third thing I said? I can't remember.
You said, you look on the job description for athletic...
Oh, yeah, I'm still hoping that the athletic director's job could be, a job description could be made so that we actually know what they're supposed to be doing, and I think it would be beneficial that it goes through both Pedluma and CASA, you know, so that it's, you know, universal and easy to fit in, and kind of like when the JVs are trained a certain way so they can come up to the varsity and vice versa, they can switch back and forth, whatever. But I think that would really bend it both schools to actually have a job description for, you know, the athletic directors or maybe the coaches, I don't know, do the coaches even know what they're supposed to do? I don't think many of them do, especially the new ones there. They have no idea that they're supposed to fill out this form or take care of that, or they should be contacting the coaches to change game times or whatever the rules are, I don't know what they are, I just know that they're really lost compared to the experienced coaches. And I think that maybe a job description for the coaches would also help them. And so this will probably be my last time here, so anyway, thank you all for listening to me, and good night.
Okay, so, there being no more comments from the public, we'll move on. Report on activities and correspondence of school board members, so hang on a few. So, school board members attended the graduations and promotions throughout our district, attended NCS playoff games, an SCL-NBL All-Star game, and a few of us went to the SRJC Foundation Pedluma Campus Breakfast for status of the JC and a fundraiser there.
Can I say a comment?
Yes, you may.
I think that this year, for those principals that are here, out of, I think this is my ninth year, was my favorite. I thought everybody did a very nice job, I thought the students were really well behaved, so clearly you all did some work in that regard. Some of those graduations in past years were less than stellar, and this year I just thought everybody did a wonderful job, so thank you. I had many, many comments, as I have in graduating senior at family and obviously friends and on both sides of town, at all levels, they were, they were really well done, so thank you.
And I'd like to, to comment on last night's adult ed graduation. It, it was tearful, as it always is, and it's always very rewarding, it's, it's one of my favorite, and I'm so glad that Pedluma City Schools gets to, to offer adult ed courses.
I would concur with Troy, and we went to, we both had Pedluma High School, but, and all the schools, I'd like to, comprehensive schools, Casa Grande and Pedluma High, I have never seen such a high-quality and caliber of kids as they marched through and shook our hands, looked us in the eye, and those kids, you, you can see, they're ready to go, but they, they get it, and so they were, I, I was really impressed with all their demeanor, how they conducted themselves, it was almost like they were getting ready to be adults, so good job to everybody. Next, we go on to the agenda, approval consent agenda by consolidated motion. I have a request, because I think it invites some discussion. I would like to request that J-2.3, the Agreement Renewal Authorization with Counterpoint Construction, be moved to, I would like to put under an action item under K for some discussion.
I'll make a motion to adjust the agenda.
So are we adjusting or are we approving and adjusting?
We'll be approving, but I'd like to take that off...
We already have the agenda, so we have to adjust it now.
So we'll go back to...
So I want to just take that off the consent.
I will second your motion to do that.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, so Steve and Donna just moved J-2.3 over to the action items?
Yep.
So, that being the case, do I have a motion to approve on the consent agenda, is so amended, so we, okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Call in favor?
Aye.
Now, let's carry the consent agenda, Donna. And now we'll move on to the action items. Let's go with K-1, Administrative Human Resources, K-1.1. Ron, would you like to address that?
Yes, I would like to address that. So, we actually have a couple of people to introduce to you. I think the only one's on the employment report, but since the second one's here, I want to introduce him as well. I'll first invite up Eric Bachman, who is the new principal for Casa Grande High School. I must say, little, you know, I think the teammate of fantastic choice. I've worked with Eric for ten years, he was initially a social science teacher when I was principal over there, and then moved into assistant principal and, and carried on the work of the smaller communities, which something you may or may not know, it's near and dear to my heart. And so, I just welcome, I think he's been doing a fabulous job on continuing to move that school forward. He's presented to you a number of times about the work he's already been doing and will continue to do, so, I don't know if you have anything that you would like to share, Eric, but just congratulations.
No, briefly, I appreciate your trust. I'm sure you know I'm committed to supporting the district vision, working hard on behalf of teachers and students. I have big shoes to fill. Mr. Everett and Ms. Shaley, incredible colleagues, many principals in the room, so I'll need everyone's support, steep learning curve, but I'm, I'm ready and willing and super excited about the opportunity, so, thank you.
Troy, does that count as a comment?
I just, I just want to take this opportunity, I know that Linda and David have worked very well together to bring the sides of this town together to make us a one-school district, and I really am confident you're gonna do the same thing, I look forward to that, so really work on making this one Pedluma City School District.
Well, you should know that David and I taught together for a couple of years at CASA, we were the first wave of smaller community teams.
I see him all the time at Pete's, I don't see you with him.
I don't want to book club you, very good, all right, thank you.
So, I would also like to announce the new Director of Facilities and Management, Joe DiCarlo. Joe, if you would like to come on. Joe, Joe has actually a wealth of experience in this world, he's just recently come from Pacific Temple, before that he was at Oregon, University of Oregon, CSU Monterey Bay, CSU Bayou Field, so he is, I think it says thirty-five years?
Cancelled with Joe.
Yeah, 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 so, and he's excited about the bond project, too.
Yeah, I've been here two days. I found a bathroom. I went and visited a couple of construction projects, I went to Casa Grande yesterday, today I met with the construction management folks, very enthusiastic, looks like a lot of fun, what I enjoy doing, thank you for the opportunity, I'm very happy to be here.
All in favor?
My last time to jump the gun, and I did it again, so.
Aren't you gonna come back as a substitute administrator?
Yeah, not, not for a hundred and eighty days at least.
K-2, Business Services, I'm gonna, I'll put that mine on the end, but, K-2.1 Purchase Orders?
Second.
Everybody have a chance to look that over? Any abstentions? Okay, all in favor? K-2.2, List of Expenditures? Everybody have a chance to look that over? Any abstentions?
I do.
Do you have an abstention, Beagle? Otherwise, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. K-2.3, Resolution fourteen fifteen dash forty-two of the Board of Education of the Pedluma City Elementary School District of the County of Sonoma, State of California, to authorize designated personnel to sign applications and associated documents for the state school facility program in the office of public school construction. Everybody have a chance to look at that?
Yep.
Any discussion? All in favor? Similarly, K-2.4, Resolution fourteen fifteen forty-three of the Board of Education of Pedluma Joint Union High School District of the County of Sonoma, State of California, to authorize designated personnel to sign applications and associated documents for the state school facility program in the office of public school construction. Any discussion? All in favor? K-2.5, Agreement Authorization with B. Benon, how do you say that, B?
Benon.
Benon, Sports Services, Inc., to supply and install per CMAS number four dash one two dash seven eight zero zero six three A, new track servicing for the Casa Grande High School New Athletic Facility Project in the amount of two-hundred-and-sixty-four-thousand three-hundred-and-eighty-five dollars via secondary school bond funds.
Some of.
Discussion?
Is rolling on the cost of that? To do the whole track?
That's the materials cost, at the last, at the last meeting you, you approved the work that's happening now with the contractor to prepare for the materials to be placed.
Because I have a question why we didn't do this ten years ago.
Two-point-three million plus to do the sidewalk.
Look at the broadside, Troy, it's twenty-sixteen years. Two thousand and one. All right, all in favor? And Linda, as you grabbed, last great act, have you seen those kids that worked so hard on that track project, remember, I think they, didn't they raise like sixty thousand dollars?
It was a significant amount, yeah.
They did an awesome job.
And if you go there now, the entire thing is gone, I can show you a picture.
That field where we were standing on Friday?
Yeah.
It's gone, she's got a great picture of it.
So we're selling pieces of turf to the recent graduate. What happens to that sixty thousand dollars?
Yeah, what's gonna happen?
So, the sixty thousand dollars, the agreement was that they're going to be able to use that to provide new hurdles and new equipment for the new track.
Nice.
Accessories.
Always very proud of it.
That's not part of the construction and bond project.
Okay, K-2.7, Agreement Ratification with Quatrochi or Quotronki or...
Quatrochi Block.
QKA, how's that?
Easier.
To provide architect services for the Casa Grande High School Modular Building Covered Walkway Project in the amount of twenty-three-thousand-three-hundred via secondary capital facility funds. Discussion?
Yeah, I mean, really, the state's questioning?
So the...
The cost of this twenty-three thousand dollars, are they questioned?
Well, so that's the architect, architects, to get the approved plans for the project. The next meeting, we're going to bring back the bid that was open today, actually, that will be on the twenty-third, we'll bring that back for approval.
So what is this for?
This is the architect work to get the design of the walkway approved.
Because the state wouldn't allow it just to be added on to or removed.
Remember, we're trying to add it on to the modular project?
We tried to see that, and they wouldn't...
The state said, no, it's, it's a project.
Stand alone project.
That's your state dollars.
Hey, give it when they take it away. All right, all in favor? So now we go to J-2.3, Agreement Renewal Authorization with Counterpoint Construction Services for Facilities and...
You did the field.
What is it?
Turf.
K-2.6.
K-2.6. Oh, you did.
Oh, I did, sorry. K-2.6, Agreement Authorization with Field Turf USA, Inc., to supply and install per CMAS number four dash oh six dash seven eight dash zero zero three one A, an artificial infield playing surface for use as an outdoor field for the Casa Grande High School New Athletic Facility Project in the amount of four-hundred-and-twenty-eight-thousand-six-hundred-and-twenty dollars via secondary bond funds. Discussion?
Can I just, can I just make one other, whoever raised that money, the two kids that came in here, they were seniors this year?
I think one was a junior and one was a senior.
One was a junior this year.
Chad.
Can we make sure that whenever that opens up, that we make sure that, if they're not currently in the district, that they know and they can come back for the grand opening, whatever it is, or...
Grand opening, they get to cut the ribbon.
I just thought of that, whatever, whatever it is, so that was...
Yeah, way off the, yeah, Troy. Do you do it?
Kick me out, so...
Okay, so back to the item in hand. So we had a, we had a motion, we had a second, do we have any commentary discussion?
No, just happy about it.
Okay, all in favor? Thanks for reminding me. Okay, now we'll go to J-2.3, Agreement Renewal Authorization with Counterpoint Construction Services for Facilities and Construction Management Services.
Lou?
Okay, discussion. Steve, I was a little concerned, I, I really, within light of our new facilities...
Guru said.
Guru, yeah. The, could you review the importance of these guys and their, their scope of, of services to us vis a vis our construction projects?
So, yeah, they, so they work with the facilities departments, and the facilities department has been the clerical person, secretary in charge of facilities, and myself, so they'll be working with Joe going forward, but they work on the documents, if legal issues come up, they, they advise and work with attorneys relative to that, they put together all of our bid packages for the plans, they monitor the work of construction, the contractors, the architects, as well as the subcontractors on projects, so they are very integral to, to the projects. This last year, there's a lot of large projects that we had, but when you have a Director of Facilities and Maintenance, who's also responsible for the daily work of the maintenance department, I believe that this will continue to be a, a critical role for the district. It might be a little different than it currently is as far as small projects are concerned, but on large projects... It might be a little different than it currently is as far as small projects are concerned, but on large projects, um, they are very valuable. One of the things that they just, um, accomplished for us, which was, we're having a difficult time with, was to find a DSA inspector. All of our normal DSA inspectors and the ones, um, in this county are basically busy with jobs, and DSA would not allow them to take on any more work, or they weren't interested in taking on any more work. So they, um, you know, brought in a person from East Bay that they work with in the East Bay to help us with, um, the DSA on the Casa track. And we needed to have that DSA person in place before you could have awarded the contract that you just did. So those are critical needs as well.
Okay, because I'm pretty cognizant, I don't want to handicap Joe or Gary, you know, the incoming superintendent. I, I don't want, I, I want the, I want the consultant to serve them, not them being in a position of serving the consultant, because I'm very sensitive to consultant fees on construction projects with bond money. Because I don't, that, that can get out of control really quick. And, um, I mean, I, I look, you know, to you to, basically, we've had one round with these guys, right, so far? This is a renewal.
No, we've had...
No, on this particular bond project.
Well, yeah, we just, they just did the first one, but, but they've been serving the district since 2004. So, you know, they came on actually in the construction of the Kennerworth site and have been with the district ever since, and...
And they find their charges reasonable, and then...
Yeah, it's definitely value-added to projects.
Did I read that contract incorrectly? Um, they are as needed, right?
Correct.
I mean, there's no...
We're not guaranteed.
No retainer, there's no guarantee, there's no...
Correct.
So we just need to manage that.
Right. I want to make sure we're not binding Gary and Joe.
And so Joe will be approving their invoices, uh, calling on their services for projects, um, much as I have done over the last decade.
Okay, and then, like, Joe, Gary, and those guys can work out, like, who's going to, to go by the site and be our, our point person, more or less, right?
Right. And it depends on the size of the project, um, as to, you know, who that person, person will be.
Well, I'm really concerned about us having a very, how is it, visible and a constant presence of our point person, so people know who to go to. Because some of the things I've heard on the smaller projects is, on a site, I mean, did they go as a site administrator? It just happened to be the gym floor, remember? Did we go the athletic director? I mean, it's like, we ask the guy that's pushing the broom across the quad. I mean, it, it, we got to have somebody that all these people know they go to. And a consistent basis, because that's, otherwise it can get real expensive and hurt.
Why are they missing this?
Yeah, please. I mean, that's why we're discussing it, Joe.
I met with the construction management people today. Uh, there are two liaisons with them, and I made perfectly clear that I'm the point person. And, uh, we went over the jobs that are active right now. There's about twelve of them. And, uh, he's supplying me with the job scheduling, where these jobs are along job scheduling, uh, the financials, what they've spent, incremental payments up to a point, and, uh, they assigned various project managers within their organization to, uh, the particular jobs. And, uh, it was made perfectly clear, clear to them today that I am the point person, and I will be visiting the projects on a regular basis. So, as, um, they put their financial and job scheduling reports together, it's electronically I will receive at the same time.
Okay, that's great.
And then will you pass it on to each site where there's a project going on, so they're also in the loop, what's going on?
Basically, I, I don't understand the question.
So, will someone at each site, where there's a major project going on, know what the status is of the project, or they can come to each?
That's right. The, the project management company, Counterpoint, has a point person to run each project. Okay, and then, of course, everything under them is a subcontractor, okay? So they coordinate the job, okay? I will be the liaison with that point person from Counterpoint, and it might be, if we've got eight jobs going, it might be eight different people. But, uh, they got my cellphone today. Uh, my email will be ready in a couple of days, and so I tell them, it's just, I'm the person you talk to. I'm, I'm the person who will visit the site. So I'm the person who will give you the answers, so.
And I think Phoebe just wants to make sure that there's a, a loop around to the site administration on what's happening on site, so.
Oh, you're talking about the, uh, keeping the...
Putting everybody's side.
Not a problem, not a problem.
All right, anybody have any other questions or concerns? You comfortable?
So far, I went out of screen, but I'm not.
With telephone, can manage that?
Yeah, they seem very cooperative with everything. Uh, like, uh, Steve said, we've had a track record with them. In fact, they were receptive to it, because it's easy for them to talk to one person as opposed to another people.
All right, well, it's good that you agree with it.
Okay.
Thank you. Appreciate it. All in favor?
Aye.
So that brings us to, um, Business Services, Enrollment and ADA Report. Anybody have any...
I have a question on that, not Business Services, under Educational Services.
Okay, we'll be there in a minute. Anybody have anything to discuss, L-1.1? Any questions? L-2, Educational Services, um, first reading of Pedaluma Joint Union High School District's new courses, Baron?
Yeah, I was excited to see that, um, that they were going to be ge-aligned. Is that correct? One of the, on the application for the sports medicine one, it said it was not college prep, so I might want to check that one.
All right, we'll check that one.
And then, um...
Comes back again.
Yeah, and then, um, will these be offered this fall?
These will all be offered this fall. In fact, they have been already offered.
Okay, so you are counting on us approving them?
Not necessarily in this format. They were, um, Mount Squad was, um, in terms of computer science, will be offered for the first time in the fall. Mount Squad was kind of piloted this year, and then Sports Medicine has been offered.
Okay, it's just the A to G part that's getting it. Okay, so yeah, might have to check that. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
So, any future business?
The, uh, meeting on the sixteenth, as we discussed, and then we'll come back on the twenty-third and, uh, the L cap, any questions?
No, we'll, we'll consider it.
We'll have, if you don't adopt it, that night we'll come back and ask you.
What about ratification of the, um, agreement with...
Ratification will be on the sixteenth. That's, and the AB 1200 and ratification will be on the sixteenth.
Okay, thank you.
So now we'll go to signing of papers, and then, uh, we got a report out on a few actions on items heard in closed session. So luckily for you, there's only one. This is, uh, Confidential Staff Reportation for Case Number Thirty-eight. A case that has been presented to the Board of the Student Encomit and Expellable Act, as defined by the California Education Code. Recommend motions for the Board to expel and to suspend the site discipline team's recommendation for expulsion in accordance to Board policy and to allow continued enrollment in a district operated school under mandated conditions. The student's suspension expulsion status will be effective the fall and spring semesters of the 2015-2016 school year. Conditions above subject to review with evidence of positive attendance, satisfactory behavior, substance abuse, counseling program, and screening, community service, and appropriate academic performance. Second. All in favor?
There's a report out of the, um, three Casey waivers that were approved in closed session.
And we, we had, uh, Casey waivers, and, um, they were approved. I don't have to read anything about that.
Never.
That being the case, then I think we can say, let's go Warriors, and we adjourn.